I noticed we have a tree in the yard. You got one of them?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. What's that? Nice serving tree.
Two leaves.
Two leaves. All right. Okay, everyone, thank you and welcome. It is 6:36. And I will call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order to determine whether a forum is present. It is present. I understand we have Mr. Pinson back. Welcome back, Mr. Pinson. I missed you at the last meeting. And Mr. Pinson will do the end location call.
Mayor, I was here last night. I just was here a week late. I got the days.
Oh. Oh, we won't blame you anymore.
Let's pray to get it done back. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for just the name of Jesus and just this community where we have just the honor to raise families and do business and do life together. And for tonight, I just want to pray for a spirit of just being together in this community that everyone has value and worth. I want to thank you for just what we in advance want to ask you to give these council members wisdom to lead us, to guide us as a city to do the right thing, to try to do the right thing, to just to be led and directed in a way that we would just see great good in our city. We pray over our council members tonight, give them the mind of what they need for the wisdom they need. I pray for our staff that are here today, the sense of deep heartfelt meaningful appreciation we have for their labor and the time and efforts beyond the call of duty to take care of all of us here in the city. And I thank you for the guests, the citizens who are here tonight. And just thank you that the people who stand before us are our elected officials. And it's our responsibility to lift them up and support them and to care about the hard job they have and just help them with that tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinson. This evening, we also have a long event, the Fledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Hernandez, we leave this in the Fledge of Allegiance. Mr. Hernandez, if you don't know, you're our chief.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have on the agenda is the first call, I'm sure anybody who wants to sign up, did they sign up this evening? There is confusion about the sheets. We're all good. Thank you. All right. Next is acknowledgement and presentation. I believe we have one. Johnny, presentation of the National Award 2018 to the City of Castle Hills from NATW, National Association of Town Watch, recognizing outstanding participation in America's National Night Out Against Crime. I understood the President Trump could be here tonight.
The ambassador.
So I guess Johnny will be presenting that to the city.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council, staff, citizens. Appreciate y'all coming out for this, as well as the rest of the council event. I would just like to say that this is the fifth year in a row, Mr. Mayor, that we've been recognized by National Association of Town Watch for our participation in the National Night Out. This year, we received our highest award in the country in our category. We were place number seven. So this plaque, sir, if you'll accept this on behalf of the National Night Out, the police department will hang over here with the rest of them and add another council meeting. We'd like to recognize the block party post.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, Johnny, for this. But we'd like to remind everybody, this is a national award. So do we have enough room over there to put this up on the wall? No, I'm good. We'll keep it near.
Bill, go ahead.
Okay. And who do you want to recognize more?
Exactly. I wanted to say a special thank you to Lieutenant Wayne Wagner and Gloria Meliante. She's not here this evening, but both those two efforts made this possible in partnership with our citizens. But they did the heavy lifting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Our pleasure.
And I'm honored to look forward to that event this year. How many we had this year, Johnny? Uh, fifteen. Fifteen. Sixteen. Sixteen. Sixteen parts. Wow. That's fantastic. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is present a fitness ribbon award to Captain Zuniga.
No.
Life saving first.
Life saving.
For life saving ribbons?
Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Present life saving ribbon award to Officer Crawford, Lemon, and Officer Earlywine.
Again, thank you all. This is a pretty profound, pretty found moment. In a minute, I'm going to play a video for you, but first, I'd like to read a letter that Officer Fawcett put together. A little backstory to this. I came out the night this happened. I came in about 9:30 at night, and I didn't do much, but I came out and assisted Sergeant Turner and Officer Earlywine during the interview of the offender, who gave a full confession to this. That said, I was as an active participant in the investigation. Officer Fawcett thought it important to write this letter and bring our attention to the gravity, which we knew was a very serious offense, but the efforts that the officers put out. And when you watch the video here in just a moment, I think you'll agree so. If you will, allow me to read this letter real quick. I won't mention the dates in specifics, but back in November, officers at Castle Hills Police Department were dispatched to Blanco and 410 for a report of two vehicles intentionally ramming each other. We learned that one was an ex-boyfriend chasing his estranged girlfriend. Upon getting, arriving in the area, Corporal Crawford, Officer Lemon, and Officer Earlywine immediately began searching the area and quickly located a suspect vehicle traveling north on Blanco. The suspect then rammed the victim's car into one of our patrol units in the South Mountain lanes of Blanco, pinning her in there, in the car, between his vehicle and ours. He exited his vehicle, ran up to hers, and began stabbing her through the driver's side door after opening it. And he also stabbed her passenger. During this time, Officer Crawford, excuse me, Officer Lemon quickly engaged the suspect, pulling him away from the victim as Corporal Crawford chanced over the hood of the vehicles. Officer Earlywine arrives, and all three were able to subdue the act of resistance to suspect, preventing the victim's injuries from becoming fatal. If you would, watch this video for me. It's real brief, about a minute and a half. I think it'll illustrate what I tried to do so far.
Castle Hills Police say a man arrested on assault is released from jail already to end up with a high charge for attacking the same person five days later. The latest incident happened this weekend, and actually, that assault was held as Castle Hills Police say the alleged victim was trying to escape a violent relationship. Castle Hills Police say the young Miss Obelis could not take the break up when he went to look for his back girl, which burned her lung bone in northwest 410 Friday night.
He proceeded to go to her workplace in our city, where he needed to rent her car with his car.
They say he come on and she tried to leave him.
Come on the side as she was driving off, and ultimately, returned in his cars, leading to pursuit.
Police were already on their way as Obelis continued to wreck her car.
It culminated with her being pinned in our patrol units in the South Mountain.
In seconds, they say the 20-year-old was attacking her with a knife.
And began stabbing her, never to go to the household or child. Officer, the vehicle begins to manifest, and this transpired very quickly.
Obelis was arrested for resisting arrest and two counts of aggravated assault. The 80-year-old, alleged victim, and the 100-year-old were treated for stabbing cuts.
Fine, sustained.
Again, a very brave situation, and thanks to our officers for preventing further injury and possibly loss of life. Two of them weren't able to attend that break. Officer Earlywine, he's on orders. He's currently serving his military commitment on the border. And Corporal Crawford, he's answering a call right now, as would be expected of these hardworking folks. That said, Officer Lemon is here, sir. Please come up. Mr. Mayor, if you'll join us. What we'd like to do is reissue. We issued this life-saving ribbon at our recent police department meeting, and we want to reissue that as an appreciation of how we feel for Officer Lemon and the results of placing a premium on recruitment and bringing in the right folks to Castle Hills here. Officer Lemon, thank you very much for your commitment to this city, your commitment to the career field, and certainly to the citizens of this city.
Now, there's a little joke, and it's not a joke, but I think Johnny explained how serious it is that being in the center of the Seven Parters City of the United States. You know, we're a manager, but there is a joke out there among the police department and there, and nobody calls them there after 10 o'clock at night unless we shout somebody, they shout somebody, or somebody about. And I'll tell you, I retract that statement when something like this, something like this comes along. And Johnny, I can say, because there's no more else than the proof that's in the movie. But this is a, you know, we live in this, right smack down in the middle of the Seven Parters City of the United States. And you guys put up with what you were put up with in LA or Chicago or anything. So we're very lucky to have them. And thank you, Johnny, for all you did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. One more. I'd like to add that our telecommunicators in particular, Shannon Harper, were on duty that night. Always a voice of calm, voice of hope. Much appreciated.
Okay. Next on the agenda is one of my favorites, the fitness award. And I would like to bring Captain Zuniga, Detective Cheetham, Officer Alcala, and Officer Earlywine. I congratulate them for receiving 90% on the new state recommended concept to Rover, Rover?
Rover.
Fitness assessment. Gentlemen.
Officer Fawcett, if you'd please step up and read the letter that you put together for this presentation, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, citizens, good evening. Last spring, the department joined the ranks of public safety agencies nationwide in an initiative to completely open all our fitness testing programs. Over the past few decades, our industry standard has been a Cooper's test, which largely consisted of model half-run, sit-ups, push-ups, and measures overall aerobic capacity. After recent research in the field of exercise physiology, it's shown strong correlations between anaerobic capacity or VO2 and overall cardiovascular health. And virtually, a strong correlation also exists between a lower VO2 and all-cause mortality. In the United States, heart disease is the leading cause of death. Our first responder community is no exception. For our population, statistics show several prevalent trends. Law enforcement officers live an average of 22 years less than the average American. Nearly 50% of law enforcement officers have died from heart disease within five years of retirement. Police officers are 25 times more likely to die from cardiovascular disease than from the violent actions of a suspect. Our average life expectancy is 57 years, while the median is 79 years. Leading this initiative for change, the Texas Department of Public Safety adopted the Concept 2 Model D Indoor Rover as its primary fitness testing platform, utilizing the 2,000-meter rope. Participants are asked to give an all-out effort to yield an age and gender norm score percentage. The gentlemen that I have the honor of introducing to the council this evening have distinguished themselves particularly on the 2,000-meter rope by scoring in the 90th percentile of R O M Fitness Star Award. Just as a point of reference, the Texas Department of Public Safety originally created this award for state troopers and Texas Rangers, and these gentlemen earned this achievement if the same standard DPS holds its participants, too, and this achievement is truly outstanding work. Gentlemen, as your name is called, please come forward individually and be recognized. Nathan Alcala scored 92% in the spring, 9% in fall testing cycles. He's unable to be here tonight. Detective Jim Cheetham. Detective Cheetham scored 92% in the spring and fall testing cycles. Derek Earlywine scored 95% in the fall testing cycle. Officer Earlywine is on a military deployment right now. He's not available. Captain Steve Zuniga scored 97% in his spring testing.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your commitment. Do you have that for me? Officer Fawcett? Real briefly, Officer Fawcett was the officer that volunteered to go to highway patrol on a six-week course, Advanced Physical Fitness Readiness Instructor, where he also earned his American College of Force Medicine certificate as personal trainer. He champions our fitness efforts now, and it's because, again, we place a premium in this area of law enforcement that we get these types of results. I couldn't be more proud of this group of folks. They're the best in the business. Thank you, and thank God for Fawcett.
If you ever get a chance, I think it is once a year or twice a year when we have our fitness thing out there where you do that once a year.
obstacle course.
Obstacle course. It's really worth coming out to see what these gentlemen can do, finally able to find somebody to keep up with. And, no, I'll tell you what, there's a couple of them over there. I wouldn't want to chase the name, that's for sure, because they're going to catch you. So, gentlemen, thank you very much for not only what you do, but also your, the way you keep yourself fit and fit and ready to do your job, and it needs to be done.
Real quick, I noticed Corporal Crawford was able to join us. Now, sir, if you'll stand up, I missed the recognition earlier. Corporal Crawford was one of the recipients of the life-saving award for his efforts back in November at preventing the fatality that, uh...
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is Citizens to Be Heard. And I would like to remind you that these are items that are not on the agenda, and it's customary that we take three minutes here. So I believe we have, um, one more on the Citizens to Be Heard. So that says, Ms. Gilliam, this is...
This is an agenda item. It's an agenda item.
Your act of right. Thank you. Next off, Citizens to Be Heard is Mr. Lewis Jimenez.
Thank you, guys.
Which one, sir?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. I'm going to need Ben Nada to...
The Adams is clear.
My month first.
All right. No problem. I knew that. Thank you very much for coming back. Had a little long day. Mr. George Lewis, Calvin Ryan.
Evening, Mayor, council, city manager, residents. A couple of things I want to point out tonight. I was looking at the city website, and it shows that the parks has a meeting on Saturday, but it fails to mention that we have a city council meeting tonight. It also fails to mention that we have a CCPD crime board meeting tomorrow. It's something that we constantly seem to have forgotten about, our crime board, as well as council meetings, letting the citizens know. We might have a bigger turnout should we post these things on the city website. Secondly, I've mentioned before that you put in a new rule here with a handicap spot, but you failed to put up a sign. Likewise, the signs that we do have in the parking lot don't indicate that we charge a fee if you get caught parking illegally. So I suggest if you want to charge money, be posted as a sign in the park.
Thank you, George. Okay. Next on the list, next to not least, Brother Rick Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brother Rick, building 201 in Gladiola. I have lived in Castle Hills for 21 years. Is this on?
Yes, yes.
And never mind wildest dreams that I would think that I would need the services of our EMTs and the fire department and the police department all at the same time. As some of you may have heard, I fell January 12th and broke my hip. But that's not what I'm here for. But it was the response. It took me 45 minutes to crawl to the phone, and immediately, the dispatcher, I can't say enough about the dispatcher of the police department, who stayed on the line. I was beginning to pass out, and he made sure that I stayed with him until, and he said I was sending an officer first, and the others would be along, and two officers showed up, seemed to me like within 30 seconds. I mean, I don't know, but it was awfully quick. And that's the essential element that I think all of us need to think about in terms of our services that we have and how beneficial they are. In other areas, I don't think we've got that kind of service. And then, of course, the fire department came along and helped get someone stabilized, and then, of course, a caddy. So the whole thing worked seamlessly and smoothly, and I'm just ever so grateful that we have the emergency responders that we do, and I sincerely hope that I never need to issue again. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next on the list is Ginger Majors.
Ginger Majors, guys here in High Gladiola. I think I'm the second or the thirtieth citizen in my area to request a stop sign. Be considered for the intersection of Gladiola and Town View. As you're coming off the access road and turning right onto Gladiola, cars are zooming around the corner really fast, and people complained about when you're walking, it's dangerous. Just coming out of my driveway, it's dangerous, too, because they're coming around the corner so fast. So I'd like to request that. The other thing I want to talk about, and it may not be appropriate now, I may have to weigh it, and that's the drainage behind Gladiola, between the bank and the, you want me to just go and talk about that?
Well, you have to find Ginger that I know about. That particular drainage area in specific, so, go ahead.
Well, I've got an area cleared out in 1966, and it'll show that it was a natural flow of water. Problem is, think dug in the middle of the night, dug a ditch much closer to our property lines, it doesn't follow the natural route. And I'd like for y'all to look at it when you're considering drainage, because whatever you do now might impact that area adversely or might help. I'm just wondering if there's a way to reroute some of the water over to the cement hub where, because we've got erosion again of people's fences. They put up two fences now, this is on her own property lines there. And the other one, the erosion is standing in place where the bank planted the trees for our visual privacy. Well, it's erosion. So I'd like to go on the ground.
All right. Mr. Radley, would you give with Miss Majors and fill her down on what stage is that particular area of the drainage over there on that, please? Okay. Next is John Sparker.
Good afternoon, council. Good evening, council. John Sparker, to your head, change your board.
Listen, wait.
Excuse me? I'll wait. Wait for them to pay attention.
Okay.
Please hold.
Hands here.
Oh, I'm waiting because council is not paying attention.
No, no, no. Why am I wishing 91?
I see you writing and just going on and on. Leslie, okay? So I would ask you to, Mayor, is it possible to make sure council is paying attention to this?
John, go ahead. I think they're right.
Okay. So all I wanted to do is bring up, I want to salute what they're doing for making the effort and the strength to come up here to address council. And I think council, I think there's these chambers need a little bit of work, minor work, actually, and to help allow our senior citizens to be able to either speak from the audience or be more ADA accessible. And so I think either we can have some sort of a microphone if we needed to that can be passed out, or just, I think this may be considered that going forward for the benefit of the people that take the time to come here as a council meeting. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Mr. Radley, would you give to John and explain to him what steps we're taking as far as the new audio equipment that you have worked with? Not now, later.
I have the company coming in next meeting. We'll discuss incorporating that.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, John. We're through with Citizens to Be Heard, so we'll move on down the list, which is to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda are items that are self-planned for the city council to have previously discussed or have previously discussed and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, providing that it moves forward as planned, and unless council members so request. The Consent Agenda is for consideration by the city council only and not subject to public discussion. On that is item number A, regular city council meeting minutes, October 4th; two, regular city council meeting, November 13th; three, regular city council member, January the 8th meeting; and four, special council meeting, January the 14th. Council, is there anybody who would like to pull any of those by? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, city attorney Mark Schnell presented some changes to the November 13th meeting, and they're at your dais, at your places, with his changes, and I've already made them in those minutes.
Have you everybody seen the changes that Mr. Schnell gave to each one of the council members?
They're attached to the...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Pull up four.
Four. October 4th and November 13th.
Okay, we're pulling regular council meeting minutes, October 4th and November 13th. Ms. Williams, would you like to...
Re- re- go to the couch? Okay.
Yeah. I can talk to you.
Hands here.
And we don't have the January 8th also. We'll bring them back at the March meeting.
What happened?
They're not prepared. They're not, they weren't ready.
Leslie, go ahead.
Yes, on October 4th, on page two, John Kennedy's statement, I think that the missing award, they don't need, what missing award need, because it doesn't make sense without it. And then on...
Underwear, I'm sorry.
And two, John Kennedy's statement.
Grammar...
Oh, I, I, okay.
Okay? And then, and then on, I have a...
And four, special council meeting January the 14th. Council, is there anybody who would like to pull any of those by? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, city attorney Mark Snow presented some changes to the November 13th meeting, and they're at your dais, at your places with his changes, and I've already made them in those minutes.
Have you everybody seen the changes that Mr. Snow gave to each one of the council members?
They're attached to the.
I'm sorry. Number four.
Four. Okay, we're pulling regular council meeting minutes October 4th and November 13th. Ms. Williams would like to. Re- re- go to couch.
Yeah.
And we don't have the January 8th also. We'll bring them back at the March meeting.
What happened?
They're not prepared. They're not, they weren't ready.
Leslie, go ahead.
Yes. On October 4th, on page two, John Kennedy's statement, I think the missing word they don't need, what missing words need, because it didn't make sense without it. And then on.
Underwear, I'm sorry.
And two, John Kennedy's statement.
Grammar.
Oh, I, I, okay.
Okay? And then, and then on, I have a letter, third, on page eight, number 13, I'm sorry. Page eight, under, the vote down to bottom under 11. The sixth vote was unanimous, and it was not, it was four to one.
Four to one.
I'm, 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 yes. Okay, so voting second, discussion again, second, and then that vote, vote back again, and the vote was four to one, that unanimous.
Okay.
And that's it. And I would like to, I would like to compliment our district secretary, Mike, who made a decent job on this minutes. Best minutes we've seen in very long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
You remember that? Okay. We have most of the things on consent agenda, I have one through four, please.
I'm going to accept the consent and ask for it.
Okay? Anyone say it?
Say it.
Okay. Since there's really no special unless any, all of them there? Energy now. Okay. Thanks, everyone. Okay. Let's go ahead and get through this item, and then there's a couple items that I'll move around a little bit. Under new businesses received presentation of potential acquisition of real property and improvement at 212 Lemonwood and possible discussion. This evening, we have Mr. Earl, David Earl, who used to be a resident here in Castle Hills. And David, you're involved in so much, I would probably want to step back unless you explain exactly what you do today, besides being a leading attorney of the city.
I appreciate that, Mayor. And council, thank you very much for allowing me to be here this evening. To answer your question, I'm currently engaged in a lot of land development activities. We've developed companies I own, and legal practice continues to represent clients in economic development, municipal law, and political lobbying as well. I'm here tonight because one of my clients, Betty Howard, a resident of this good city, owns a piece of property at 212 Lemonwood, right across the street, about 150 feet from where we're standing now. And back last year, we made a proposal to the city, to the mayor's city manager, was an offer to sell the property to the city for an event center, community center, for the benefit of the city. And moving on this in a slow and very thoughtful way, we asked that this council put this item on the agenda. I'm very grateful that you did. So I want to give a little presentation, as brief as possible, about what this is about. And because it deals with the acquisition of real property, at the end of it, I would encourage you to discuss this in executive session and take a few other steps to allow you to examine the possibilities that this offer presents. For those who may not know, this site, like I said, is located in the map, you can see it there, and you have your presentation, slide two, is located catty-corner from City Hall. It's about two and a half acres of property. Within one mile of this property, this site resides over 75% of the city's population. There's eight churches, seven schools, and of course, your city government offices are within this one-mile radius. Like I said, about 150 feet from property to property. If you look at the next slide, the property is about two and a half acres. It contains an 8,000-square-foot, basically convention space known as the carriage house. Very unusual for that type of structure to have been built, but it was improved by the city. It's valued by its insurance appraisal at approximately $2 million. It contains a commercial-grade kitchen, a bar and serving area, full surround sound speaker, audiovisual equipment, the state-of-the-art, men, women, and family restroom facilities, multi-level interior loft, a fully loaded entertainment system, three large bay doors for interacting with the outside for events, water fountain, commercial-sized water meter, three-phase electricity gated access, concrete driveway, arches in and tiled and carpet flooring throughout, it's in very pristine condition. It's truly a class A space. To give you a few pictures of the interior of the space, it has got hand-painted murals on many of the walls. It's very tastefully decorated, and it's also very tastefully laid out for convention and event purposes. Here's a couple more pictures that show the three bays, the commercial kitchen, the bar area, and more of the meeting space area, the floor of the event center. Now, I'll tell you that this, this building has not been able to be realized for its full potential for this city. And there've been many requests to rezonate, there've been many requests to do something with it, all of which have been denied by the city upon request. However, I want to point out the benefits, because maybe all that happened for a reason, the benefits that the city could gain from this particular property and by acquiring this property. Primarily, it's economic benefits as well as social and interactive benefits. It can provide a community center and event center for the city, which it currently config relaxed. It can give you additional potential subtax revenue from events that are held there. It provides multiple use revenue streams, an opportunity for this city to have additional revenue from sources it currently does not have. And we all know that the city needs additional revenue. But we also know that as a veteran of the community, you're landlocked by, as the mayor put it, the seventh largest city in the United States. With not a lot of room to grow, both economically and physically, you have to be creative and look for other revenue streams to garner the city additional revenues for various uses. It provides tremendous leasing and rental opportunities. And if you look around this location, there are a few event centers that are doing very, very, very well. They're always booked up. And you have one sitting right across from City Hall that the city could utilize and benefit from if you decide and want to explore the acquisition of it. Again, the potential source of revenue that would come from, in addition to having it as a youth center for the city and the public and the population of the city, as an additional benefit, bring it out for weddings, receptions, corporate events, political events, retreat center events, fundraising events, award dinners, leasing, meeting space for organizations, and private events as well. It makes perfect common sense that this thing is available and capable of doing a lot for the city. Some of the anticipated developments that would need to occur as part of the city's acquisition of the property, should they choose to do so, would be construction of a parking lot within the property that allows for the parking of the required number of vehicles. We'd recommend also a crosswalk from this property, the government office, to the subject property, provide safe access back and forth for pedestrian traffic if there's combined events. And also, look at potential access to Luke 16, to Luke 410 access road, as well as potential honey supper lane, provide in-and-out traffic from the property without having to get on the lemonwood or affect the neighborhood traffic patterns. When I say this is a tremendous revenue opportunity for the city, if you look at a potential revenue model, and these numbers I'm about to show you are extremely conservative. They're based on real examples. Contacting those event centers within two, two miles or three miles from here and find out what their rates are. And in that radius, there are some type A, type B event centers and some lesser event centers. So we're very conservative and brought these numbers down to the lowest averages. For the lower-end type facilities that have a 7,000, 8,000-square-foot capacity, we're even close to that. For Van Laagie Park is far below it, but it's, it's something that is in the range. Weekdays with deposits, there are about $2,000, $250 to $3,000 to rent them per weeknight. Weekends, $3,500 to $5,000 per night. The higher-end facilities currently rent for about $3,500 to $4,500 for weekdays and between $5,500 to $8,000 per night for weekends. I'm sure any of you that have been involved in planning a party, a wedding, and fundraisers know the expense of these type of facilities. It's extremely high, and they're very valuable. If you look at the revenue projections conservatively, you only assume that only five events occurred, there were rental events on weekdays, and only three events per month occurred. So five events per month on weekdays and three events per month on weekends, that would garner the city about $33,000 in additional revenue that you currently don't realize. The cost for that, including the cost of acquisition, assuming you use some type of structure to acquire this property, and my client's willing to owner-finance it in essence for the city, together with the cost of utilities, insurance, landscaping, and management costs, come out to about $14,200 a month. That is, again, a very conservative estimate, both on the profit side and expense side. It leaves you with a monthly net revenue of $18,800 a month, or an annual net revenue of $225,000 more per year conservatively. And that's assuming that the city acquires this property and uses it minimally for event lawn, without tapping into other resources that are available to you to acquire it, like Parks and Recreation Grants from the Texas Parks and Recreation Department, federal grants and other state grants. They're designed to help small communities acquire or build places for community events and gatherings just like this. And those are all things that are available to you that should be looked at as part of the potential acquisition of property. What does that mean for the city? The city currently faces, and every time I come to these meetings, and I'm sure you're all aware, a lot of obstacles in the regard of funding, it's needed improvements for streets, for drainage, and other things like that, parks and open space improvements, handicapped access, other things that you need. Where does the city find the money for it? That's always been a problem. The answer is to think creatively and look at other potential revenue streams that you can have at your disposal and that lie just a few feet away from you currently to help you fund that. And by that, I'll tell you that with the additional revenue stream of $225,000 a year, if you look at the debt service ratio, it allows you to acquire over $3.2 million in capital improvement financing now, to improve and correct street conditions now, to improve and correct drainage conditions now, and to provide you with funding for parks and open spaces. That's almost half as much of the entire city's budget for a year at your disposal by making a decision to pursue something that's both good for the city, gives it additional amenities, and is created as a revenue source, with no increased taxes. This would all be additional new revenue for it. So tonight, I'm here to make this presentation and to ask a few things of you, to take a few next steps to explore this opportunity to benefit the city and its taxpayers. We're requesting the council to deliberate on this matter in executive session. Under chapter 551 of the government code, you're allowed to go in executive session and discuss this important matter because it deals with the potential acquisition of real property. So asking that you take advantage of the opportunity to have a discussion on yourself. Two, express to us whether or not, after you've done that, the city is interested in continuing to explore this opportunity to acquire this property and to do something good for the city, both financially and fiscally, as well as from a community standpoint with it. And three, if you are interested, we ask that you authorize an individual or create a committee and authorize that committee to evaluate the opportunity, negotiate potential terms of acquisition, and then come back and make a recommendation to city council on what that looks like and what the benefits, and also what the downfall's like, so you can make an informed decision. That's our address tonight, and I thank you again for your time and listening to the presentation.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. Brother Bill, when David came to us a number of months ago, and we started talking about this with the, with the city manager, and we, I'm gonna be real upfront with you at the time, I made a lot of explanation on this and a lot of how all this has worked. And David did the homework on it. We did the homework, and he came back and was explaining the economic development avenues of this. And I could foresee the future. The first thing someone would say is, this is too expensive, it would never happen, we can't do it, until I started thinking about, and this is all of the council, as soon as I started thinking about the 40 years that I had in the hospitality industry. And those audio systems, the only reason I use that is because it was a place that people got married, I haven't been married here myself. But as far as the look at these income possibilities, I talked to the city of shirts, talked to other cities who, who has this, not on behalf of the city, but on behalf of the business person. If I was 30 years younger, David would even be present, that's what I would buy in a second, based on the terms that David has put forward. But I think that this is far too important for us to make a decision tonight, or to even, to even get into any discussion about it, about it tonight. But I would strongly suggest, since I can't tell you to do anything, all I can do is ask, I would strongly suggest that we follow the advice of David, and we come up with, first of all, whether or not we're interested in this after exploring all of the things he's put together, and then come up with a, a non-biased committee to figure out if this could work in our city. Unless you've been in the hospitality industry, unless you've been involved in these places around the city that do these sort of things, the Black Swan Inn, places all around the city that do these sort of things, you don't understand the amount of money that's involved in it. And what we do need is money. And, you know, you can come up with all the reasons we want on expense and this and that, and whatever it is that, that it would take to do it, but that would all get into the business plan. So that's all I'm asking of you. But that said, I'd like to turn it over to council to define, to decide what they're going to do as far as moving forward is concerned. I, I think this is too important to just yay or nay, and that is going to work, and we walk away from it, which could very easily happen.
Mr. Mayor, our resident signed up to see if I had an item. Already asking us what we're going to do, and how in executive session to discuss this.
Well.
I think you just said we shouldn't, we shouldn't be dealing with it tonight. Is that what you just said?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, you know? We could, we could discuss this thing, thing like a council.
Then I'm, I guess we should put Mrs. Scott and I in charge of looking into this side of any of this item, because this is something we've been missions to our responsibility.
Okay. Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes. I'm, I'm with this. Scott and I are appointed to, to, to research the viability of purchase of a property at 212 Lemonwood.
Do we have a second on that?
Approving amendment, second. I'd like to amend the motion to a completed request that you contact the tourist advisory bureau, commission bureau downtown, and ask him specifically what their place on the property might be, and how it might be best used as part of the visitor convention bureau's activities to bring, to bring conventions and people and projects and entertainment to the city.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second discussion, Douglas?
Well, the opening of the room is, what is the cost of the parking? I'll just run some quick numbers, assuming it's a million dollars. And I, so, I'm not exactly sure I agree with these projections, but assuming a million dollars, you're saying the total return you get for your is 2 and 1/4 percent. And we can get 2 and 1/4 percent right now. We can get 3 and 1/4 percent right now on a 30-year treasury. So we can get an additional $100,000, put that money in the 30-year treasury versus the building, which would require an enormous number of activity. Not saying it can't happen. If, Castle Hills making the destination point for these type of centers. But just on the math, it's, we can get $100,000 more combined treasury, God bless you. The second, one thing they didn't have up here was a loss of tax revenue on the building It's negligible to the degree of a million dollars, it might even be $12,000 a year or $1,000 a month. The monthly mortgage payment is. The monthly mortgage payment is based upon what? Eighty-seven hundred dollars, that's based on what type of mortgage or what period of time and what percentage. The city has had a history of buying private property, and you're sitting in the history right now. And I, when I see we're looking at prime-to-five revenue, twenty, thirty million dollars of internal improvements, I have to rank that as prior number one. If the city could go investing in property, I would be comfortable to give the property what was bought at say half of a period of value. In case none of these things happen, you don't get all these people to come in, some of the properties, what do we do with it? I think if we bought it as a substantial discount to a period of value, we might be able to unload it if necessary. But that's worst case scenario, this is best case scenario or better case scenario. It all boils down to the numbers and how it crunches in where the taxpayer wants their revenue to go over the next twenty-five years. We want it for a permanent purpose, which we've got plenty of places for that. Or do they want us to go into a project which of a determined cost, which may or may not bring in the revenue we hope people do? I think this does deserve discussion and thoughtless. At this side, if I had to vote on this time, I would say it's premature, substantially premature. But I think it deserves discussion and it can't be dismissed out of hand. But we have only a certain numbers of dollars here in the city. We just spent a million dollars in the market. So we have to be very careful where we spend our money over the next twenty-five years. I assume this is a twenty-five year program, it's a thirty-year program. We have no idea where the eighty-seven hundred dollars come from.
I think you said the most important thing, to discuss a project of this size and a generated income, positive flow income of this size can't be done in a forum like this.
And I do believe that it is, I think it is incomplete to have a committee of just two people and not have the city president. I definitely would want to be engaged, the city, the knowledge that's coming in, that it is heard by a party that is not on a long way for being convinced this is a good thing. So rather than, I think this is Scott, this is the committee, are you all the way down the road where it's a great thing? And I think they need a temporary voice or at least somebody who has some understanding of numbers to hear what we're being told before we go and simply say, "Two people, go ahead."
I think the way it was heard and recorded, you can always add an amendment to whatever's on the floor, the way it was worded is to get started with something that would move into a committee.
But why?
Well, I don't know, I don't know, we're making this up as we go, okay? So I guess, so what you're saying is you'd like these two to do it on their own?
No, I think what things should be, okay?
All I've got to say is, after looking at the business plan, and I'll say it again, if I was thirty years younger, he would be presenting it, I'd buy it. That's it. Okay, I'm, I feel, okay, you're welcome. But in terms of this, makes sense, you know, we can fight it all day long and talk about it. All I'm asking is that council listens, at least to, and however, who listens will obviously be decided who listens. And at any time, he's not asking for a decision denied, he's not asking for anything, he's asking for, are we even interested in moving this forward? So.
One more, if I may, I think that before we make any, the city, we spend a lot of time and money looking into it, we haven't kind of given it enough time.
No, that was my concern, there's a couple of executive sessions where you can present all of the information, all of the numbers. It is not hard for us to know what we're dealing with, so not having an executive session tonight to discuss is probably, I would say we could go ahead and go in executive session and hear the numbers exactly what's involved.
David, are you prepared to talk about numbers and even what that means? What that means is you have a million ways to finance, you have a million ways to finance things and do creative financing, and that multiplies times ten when you're dealing with someone who could make a decision like that as far as changing those. So I think that, are you prepared to let me know what the asking price is and then a couple of the economic development ways that we could move forward on this without bringing the city to our needs?
Yeah, I do have that information. I don't have it in a format to present to you tonight for the purpose of an open session or an executive session, however, I could put it together for one of your next meetings you'd like.
Okay, that's what I thought. This is a, wow.
Doesn't this man, if he's not able to throw my second and offer a reliable manner to fill this next council meeting so that we can present that information to him?
Mayor, the second, if the second is removed, there's nothing to vote on, nothing to take.
Someone else can second that, too.
That's right.
But we don't need a second, we table this.
Yes.
Oh, so he's tabling?
Why don't you table?
Okay.
Like that's a low pressure.
I got it.
Because you said you were doing that in the right council meeting, and that what you were going with, Mr. Earl?
Yes, if you're looking at doing an executive session, I'd like to be able to construct everything for you in such a way that's meaningful and best, you know, capable of being conveyed to you in a very concise manner, that it would address some of the things you've already brought up, I've heard you say tonight.
I think the executive session material wants to be limited to the price, I don't think we can deliberate and I don't think we can do much in the way of exchange of our items, Mr. Earl?
Not only are you correct that the executive session has to be limited to purchase and therefore value and price, but I would strongly object to Mr. Earl being present in an executive session. If he has any material that he wants considered, he can present it to the city council for its consideration, but under the Open Meetings Act, I don't think it's appropriate for the proponent of an item to be present in an executive session.
So what is there a way to do with Mr. Earl present where we don't go into the second session?
If he wants to make the financial presentation in open session, he can. He wants to provide something in writing for the council to consider as to the price and the business terms of the purchase, that would be fine, but this does not qualify under the Open Meetings Act exceptions for economic development as it stands right now. So the only way the city can go into an executive session is under Section 551.072 to deliberate on the purchase and value of real property. Now, you have a motion to table, if I heard Mr. McCormick write, there's no discussion on a motion to table, there needs to be a vote on the motion to table. If it gets adopted, the discussion by the council is over, but I understand there may be citizens who have signed up to speak on this item, it'd be appropriate to let the citizens speak, but with the motion to table taking priority, it has to be voted on without discussion.
Not discussion with us, but the citizens are allowed to speak.
What are we making, a motion to table, are we still voting?
The motion to table must be voted on without discussion by the government body. I think it would be appropriate for the council to act on the motion to table, either adopted or not, and then whether it's adopted or not, to then allow anyone who has signed up to speak on this item have the opportunity to speak.
The motion to table stands, you're, the motion to table. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is the table sold for the next meeting, correct, or?
The next meeting?
I just want verification of the message is that the table's for the next meeting on March.
Mr. Earl, I can't, if you're ready, to present it that time, give us information like the other executive sessions, talk to him.
And what's your vote standing with all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right, there are citizens to be signed up for this, and we will start off with Lucy Minn.
Hi, Council. My name is Lucy Minn, I reside in the 204th District, and this just draws me in the sense that every one of you knows how many times we've been here in the same situation. You keep forgetting, we, the residents, have come to you and have given you direction. You are taking action in considering this? What you're actually telling me is that you're willing to compromise the luxury that I enjoy now as a resident in Castle Hills by making these changes. We weren't put here to run a business, we were put here to run a residential area. And I remind you, we worked hard to push the last two for them not to happen, and we will work just even harder on this same note. And keep in mind, what you, the direction that you were taking us, this is not anything that the residents want. You're compromising the luxury that I enjoy now with now making these changes that is going to change this whole residential area that we enjoy. I would like to see each and every one of you buy homes next door to this property and see this come to fruition. I guarantee you, neither one of you would want to do that. So don't shove it down my throat either. Thank you.
Next on the list is Zoe Gonzalez.
Mayor, council and residents and employees, Zoe Gonzalez, one of Freeway Broadway. I have been listening, it sounds interesting, however, we should leave it up to the residents of this city. I think they have a right to vote or know about it, maybe it could be put on the main ballot, or we could have town halls or something, because it's pretty important for, I think the residents are really interested in fixing our streets rather than buying concrete. But if it's going to help us make money, it's a viable opportunity, we should investigate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brother Devon?
Brother, we're doing 201 of the late. The only thing that thought occurs to me, you know, is a treaty, but I really have to second what Mr. Jimenez just said. We've been down this path before, and the first thing that has to be done before anything can be considered with the carriage house is there has to be an acquisition which perhaps Mr. Earl can help with, immediate access to 410. That then would change the whole argument. Place already has a wall routed and nobody's coming in and out of Lemonwood, or I guess it's primary, or other one, but are coming and going on 410, that eliminates a lot of the concern. But without that key piece, and that was part of the problem with the school, it was part of all these other things, trying to manage the traffic on Honey Subtle, primary and Lemonwood, it's just a deal breaker. And I think, I urge you, in the spirit of Mr. Jimenez, this is something the citizens care about, and you better get their input first before you spend and waste a lot of time, and then people come up here and get you to shoot it down. There has to be, before anything can be considered about that property, there has to be an alternate access, and I would submit, in fact, if Mr. Mayor has that kind of money, I'd buy all the property on 410. And then between the two, you know, you could really do something with it, proper access partner, even additional buildings, and sort of like a mini Most Potatoes right here. But without that, this thing is not going anywhere, and I think the citizens will see the thing.
Again, that's why I think it's so important that we get together and talk about this because right off the bat, none of us know what's in that packet, none of us knows the access that could have been acquired or not acquired, and nobody will know until after we take a strong look at it and see if you want to do that. Things aren't always as safe here. So before I would shoot any cannons across the bow, I would listen to what is offered, as would be the case in any of them, any of them, whether it be Vinnie Howard's property or Jim Howard putting Las Vegas style billboards down, or less than Terry Howard.
I can ask a question of the city, is it appropriate for us to even be discussing this once the matter's been tabled?
No, very simply, no. It would be appropriate to see if there are any other citizens signed up under item number two, excuse me, under item number one, and then to close matter one and determine if anyone on the council wishes to go into an executive session this evening, which is permitted under agenda item number two.
Okay, all right, thank you, Dr. Smith, I have a moment. Okay, so let's go to item number two, which is deliberation on purchase, exchange, lease or value of drill property at two twelve Lemonwood, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. No, we did table that, we tabled one. I mean, another two which is similar.
You couldn't table one.
I tried to table two because it wasn't having to do with one.
Table one. Right, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Okay, remember table one and two tomorrow. Okay. So now we have a motion to table two, all in favor?
Is there a second, Mayor, is there a second?
Yes, I think so.
Let's see, seconds, all in favor? All opposed? None disapprove. Okay. So manage meeting, Mr. Earl. Five minutes break.